It is now 6:00 PM, and I'm going to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Alter.
Here.
Bergus.
Here.
Harmsen.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Weiner.
Here.
Well, welcome to everyone that is here present in the audience, and then to anyone that is online. We're going to start with the first agenda item, which is 2A. 2 is proclamations, and I'm going to start with the Fair Housing Month, which is 2A. One second here. All right, here we go. Whereas April 22 marks the 54th anniversary of the passage of Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, commonly known as the Federal Housing Act, and whereas Iowa City Human Rights Ordinance has prohibited discrimination in the area of housing since 1964, and whereas equal opportunity for all regardless of age, color, creed, disability, familial status, gender identity, marital status, national origin, presence or absence of dependents, public assistance, source of income, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation is a fundamental goal of our nation, state, and city. Whereas equal access to housing is an important component of this goal, as fundamental as the right to equal education and employment, and whereas housing is a critical component of family and community health and stability, and whereas housing choice impacts our children's access to education, our ability to seek and retain employment options, the cultural benefits we enjoy, the extent of our exposure to crime and drugs, and the quality of healthcare we receive in emergencies. And whereas the laws of this nation and our city seek to ensure such equality of choice for all transactions involving housing, and whereas ongoing education outreach and monitoring are key to raising awareness of fair housing principles, practices, rights, and responsibilities, and whereas only through continued cooperation, commitment, and support of all Iowa City residents can barriers to fair housing be removed. Now therefore, I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim April 2022 to be Fair Housing Month, and to receive this is Human Rights Commissioner Chair Jason Glass.
On behalf of the Iowa City Human Rights Commission, thank you Mayor Teague and members of the City Council for recognizing our shared values around Fair Housing Month. Working towards fairness and nondiscrimination in housing is critical work, and there are many in our community who have dedicated a significant part of their lives to ensuring it. I hope recognizing this month helps to highlight the work that they are doing and the fact that we have so much more to do. I encourage Iowa City residents to better understand the history of exclusionary housing practices both across the country and right here. The Iowa City Office of Equity and Human Rights has resources and education on our past failings, the progress we've made, and the work yet to accomplish. As a member of the Human Rights Commission, the last couple of years, I've had the privilege of accepting several proclamations on a variety of important topics. Like all the others, this one articulates some important points. Statements are important, but only in so much as they inspire action. Words that are not accompanied by deeds ring hollow. Let us not allow this to happen in this case. Housing, like food and clean water, is a basic human need. Not much else is possible in a person's life if these needs are not met. A community in which residents are struggling with these basic needs cannot be successful. Let us challenge ourselves to do more to lift up our neighbors. It is right and just that we should recognize this month through a proclamation, but do not allow that to be the end of the effort. Let us also be inspired to put that recognition into action, all of us individually and together. Thank you.
Thank you. The next proclamation is to be National Community Development Week. Whereas the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Program supports viable communities by providing safe, decent, affordable housing, creating safe neighborhoods, helping seniors live independently and invest in our next generation. And whereas in our community, 47 years of CDBG funding has developed a strong network of relationships among local governments, residents, businesses, and nonprofit organizations that provide services and help make possible our commitment to meet the needs of low and moderate income residents. And whereas the home program has allowed the city with the help of private and nonprofit partners to create and preserve affordable housing for low-income families for the past 30 years. And whereas CDBG and Home are some of the federal government's most effective means to revitalize communities across the country, the importance of CDBG and Home to meet the unique needs of local communities is widely recognized. And whereas in the last five years, 3.3 million in CDBG funds and nearly 2.5 million in Home Funds has been invested in Iowa City. These funds help low-income homeowners complete necessary improvements to their property, allow for accessibility improvements in local parks, increase the quality and availability of affordable housing throughout the community, and support agencies serving our at-risk youth, elderly, and residents with disabilities. And whereas Iowa City, Iowa, and other local governments have clearly demonstrated the capacity to administer and customize the CDBG and Home programs to identify, prioritize, and resolve pressing local problems such as affordable housing, neighborhood and human service needs, job creation and retention, and property redevelopment. Now therefore, I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim April 11 through April 15, 2022, as National Community Development Week in Iowa City, Iowa, and urge all citizens to join us and recognize and as supporting the important roles the CDBG and Home programs play in our community. And to receive this is going to be our Housing and Community Development Chair, Matt.
Thank you to Mayor Teague, to the City Council, to all the members of the city staff who do so much work to support what we do at the Housing and Community Development Commission. So I just wanted to highlight a couple of things that CDBG Home Money has done recently. Mayor Teague, of course, pointed out that it provides millions of funding for marginalized members of the Iowa City community. And just in the last year alone, we've sent recommendations to the City Council for funding shelter houses efforts to end homelessness, to fund, just in the last couple of months, DBIP's efforts to provide housing for domestic violence victims, and Inside-Out reentry's efforts to provide housing for people returning to society from prison. So not only does this provide millions to Iowa City, it provides funding in particular for members of the community who are very difficult to reach with city policies. So I think that's one very nice thing that CDBG Home does. And thank you again, and hopefully this will provide 47 more years of funding for Iowa City.
Thank you. We are moving on to our consent agenda, items 3 through 8. Could I get a motion to approve it, please?
So moved, Taylor.
Second, Weiner.
All right, and anyone from the public like to discuss any item that is on our consent agenda? If so, please step to the podium. If you are online, please raise your hand, and I'll acknowledge you. Welcome.
Hello. My name is John Doe, and that is the name that you should be putting in the minutes. He says that is the name I'm providing you, and I do not consent to putting any other name on there.
Anyone else like to address an item that is on our consent agenda? Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Bergus.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Motion passed at 7 to 0. We're on to item number 8, I'm sorry, 9, which is our community comment. This is an opportunity for members of the community to come and speak about things that are not on our agenda, and if you would like to speak, please come to the podium. There is a sign-in sheet on the side. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, no more than three minutes. Please state your name and where you're from. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm going to pull my mask down here so everyone can hear me. My name is Nancy Bird. I'm with the Iowa City Downtown District. I'm the executive director there, and thank you for taking public comment tonight, Mayor and City Council members. I am here tonight because I want to call to your attention a letter that we submitted on March 10 that went to the City Council, and we're looking for feedback on the letter. Several of you asked for ways that you could support downtown businesses during our kind of, I don't want to call it post-COVID, but the times where we're trying to get back to a normal economic realm. And so we tried to work with the Board of Directors of the Downtown District and our businesses to come up with two things we thought would be really helpful, and we narrowed them down. One is the street and sidewalk cafe fee reductions. We have roughly 40 cafes downtown. They've become really, especially in the summer months clearly, because that's when they're out the most, but very important to doing business. And it's an easy way, we think, that, you know, we submitted a case study last summer to demonstrate what other cities are doing around the country with their cafes, and Iowa City's cafe, the fees for the cafes is actually on the high end. So we thought this would be a really good opportunity without changing regulations or ordinances or anything else to demonstrate some support for these businesses that are, quite frankly, still impacted. As you might notice, fees or the hours of operation have changed for restaurants. There's days where people are closed, labor shortages, inflation, food costs, all these things are challenging. So we thought this would be a really great opportunity for the city to recognize that and help support some of our hospitality industry downtown. The other one is financial support for SMIDS, for independent business assistant programs. And this is really a financial request, working in solidarity with the South District SMID, who is not quite formed yet, as you know. But this is an opportunity to recognize that these organizations are set up to specifically support clustered businesses in these, in specific areas. And we have very great, you know, just one-on-one opportunities to work with those on the margins, those that are underrepresented, and those that need additional assistance that are left out of traditional systems, including lending, including, you know, simple things that it takes more time to really address. So having additional capacity in these organizations, really with direct financial assistance from the city, is a really good nod to demonstrating that the city's here to help support. And we have, I feel like we've got a proven track record in how we can do this, and I know that the South District's going to do great as well. And our conversation primarily with Angie Jordan is that once we get these things going and we can set kind of a tenor for how it could, how these services could lay out, we don't, the Downtown District doesn't need to own that anymore, and they can move on on their own. But it's a good way to move forward in 2023. So thank you for hearing our comments, and we look forward to your response.
Thank you. And then, welcome. There is no one online.
Hello, John here. So I'm just going to read a little bit of this police blotter that y'all should have seen by now. 3/31/2022 at 10:23 PM, public civic legal citizen disposition information, location shelter house, location address, 429 South Gate Avenue. Details, GKS, JKS, which I think stands for Johnson County Sheriff's Office dropped off a mail here earlier. Shelter staff now saying that overflow is not a thing, and the subject is not permitted to spend the night in the lobby since red space is taken up. Requesting picked up. Now, let me read you Jeff Roon's words from a few months ago that were printed in Little Village. "The city has public facilities such as the library and recreation centers that often serve as warming locations during operating hours, seven days per week, and so even the hours. We actively partner with shelter houses for overnight accommodations, and again, nobody has returned away due to lack of capacity." Does the city still stand by that? If the city does still stand by that, like, you're just okay openly lying, which I, we, everyone that like actually works at the housing community knew that was a lie. He's like, "We know the housing community, like, like Shelter House." I don't know why, like, you just believe their lies. You called Shelter House. I called Shelter House before this meeting, and I was told that I was childish because I keep asking them, because I have the audacity, they care about the houseless community. As I asked them, "So if I need shelter tonight, is there, can I get shelter?" They said, "Well, no, you have to be put on the list," which, if there was not a capacity problem, there'd be no such thing as a list. But there's clearly a capacity problem, and they clearly turn people away because of capacity. I know people who've been forced to live out in parks now because the winter shelter closed about a week or so, well, over a week or so ago, and there's been snow on the ground since when the shelters closed. And there shouldn't, that should have never closed, because even if we had wonderful summer weather, people still shouldn't be forced to live outside, especially not when we have the poor weather we have continuing today. So I will read my email that I sent to y'all that only two of you responded to. Thank you, Janice and Sean. The rest of y'all, you ignored it, which I was expecting. So here it is. Housing crisis. Hello, as y'all are aware by now, I'm sure, on March 31, Shelter House called the police on individuals seeking shelter. The reason they were turned away is because of lack of capacity, a direct contradiction in irrefutable proof that the city has been lying for Shelter House and allowed the housing crisis to continually force people to live outdoors while the city does essentially nothing. You don't get to keep washing your hands with responsibility to protect Iowa City's people. Your inaction, inaction, and action perpetuates homeless houselessness. By your refusal to have a robust public housing program in the city, which is like the upstream problem that causes houselessness, you refuse even to provide emergency shelter to those currently forced on the streets. Do something about this immediately by opening a 24/7 no-barrier shelter that's open 365 days a year.
Thank you.
That is immediate, as in a matter of two weeks' action. You also need to have a serious plan to provide public housing and actually solve. If you had responded to my email, Bruce, I wouldn't be doing this. I'm not taking up your time, but I'm going to take up a few seconds.
Yes.
No, not fucking out with your million-dollar affordable housing program and actually do something to do.
To the next item on our agenda. We're on item number 10, which is planning and zoning. And I'm just wondering if the majority of council is inclined to vote with, oh, this one isn't it? All right, so 10A, it's going to be vacation and conveyance of right-of-way. Ordinance vacating approximately 3,000 square feet of public right-of-way, abutting 829 Kirkwood Avenue, and authorizing conveyance to Ritu, Jane, and Bradley J. Paulson. And I'm going to open up the public hearing. And welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Danielle Sisman, Neighborhood and Development Services. As you stated, this is a vacation request for a property located approximately along the southern or rear boundary of 829 Kirkwood Avenue. This is a 20-foot-wide, 150-foot-long, a public alley right-of-way, in which alley was never constructed. It's shown here in the dotted outline overlaid on the aerial image showing the house owned by the applicant just to the north of the vacated area. If granted, the vacation will allow for a contiguous lot at 829 Kirkwood Avenue, and the property owner is interested in building a garage behind their home, which is currently not possible due to the alley bisecting what they own. Their ownership is shown in that hashed outline there. As with all vacations, staff does review criteria related to the city's interests in behalf of owning public, holding land in trust of the public. And we review the criteria to make sure that if we were to vacate something, it would not impact negatively the public's interest. So in this case, the right-of-way is not improved. There's no actual alley built there, so it's not currently being used by any pedestrians or vehicles, including emergency or utility vehicles. The proposed right-of-way vacation will not impact, therefore, access by neighboring properties, and actually, there is an existing north-south alley which will remain and continue to be used. And the right-of-way does not contain any city utilities and any private utilities that are located there without an easement have been put on notice, that they'll need to make accommodation for that if that is the case. As far as the development steps here, this shows the vacation that we're considering today in green. A previous vacation was considered in 2008, but deferred by the applicant at that time, who were different property owners than the owners today. So after the vacation and conveyance is considered by City Council, the only remaining step would be building permit review. So based on a review of the relevant criteria, staff did recommend vacation of the alley right-of-way. At their March 2, 2022, meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with staff's recommendation and voted for 2-0 to also recommend vacation of the alley. I conclude staff report, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Great. Any questions? Thank you. And then, anyone from the public like to address this topic? Please come forth to the podium. You can sign in if you would like to address council. Welcome.
Hello, my name is John, and I do not want to be at this meeting. I fully planned on not being at this meeting today, and then I was checking the police blotter, and I saw that this house that people are being forced to live on, and I know people being forced to live on the streets.
This is item number 10A.
Fuck your rules.
Conveyance of right-of-ways.
I don't care. The right-of-way is people need housing, and I'm tired of having you forced in your secret civility to listen to me, because you're not going to listen to me no matter what.
You're done. Please cut the mic.
I'm not done.
Would anyone else like to address this topic? Would anyone else like to address this topic? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to give consideration, please?
So moved, Taylor.
Second, Weiner.
Moved by Taylor, seconded by Weiner. And council discussion.
This house has actually been something that I've seen change hands a number of times over probably the past decade, and so I think that this is a great step that the new owners want to actually create a livable way for them to access their home, and it also potentially, if ever it turns over in the market, it's another great selling point. So I'm completely in favor of this. It's a lovely addition.
I agree. It's a lovely property. I drive by there quite a lot, and the current owner has done a lot to refurbish it, and it looks really nice, and I think if this will help the livability of their home to have a garage, I'm totally in favor of it.
Yes.
Other houses in that, along Kirkwood there, have been able to build garages that make sense that we grant this.
Any other comments by council? Are we ready? Motion, can I get roll call, please?
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Bergus.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes. Motion passed at 7 to 0. We are on to item number 11, which is Asphalt Resurfacing 2022. This is a resolution approving project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the Asphalt Resurfacing 2022 project, establishing amount of bids, security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipts of bids. I'm going to open the public hearing. And welcome.
I'm Mari Van Dyke. I'm with the Engineering Division. So this is an annual maintenance project. It focuses on pavement milling and asphalt overlay. So basically, with an overlay, we remove the surface of the pavement and then replace it with new asphalt. So with this project, we'll also complete curb and gutter repairs, storm sewer intake repairs, and curb ramp replacements. So here is a map of the streets we'll be working on this year. For overlay, we will be doing Taylor Drive from Highway 6 to south of Tracy Lane, Bancroft Drive from Tracy Lane to south of Crosby Lane, Crosby Lane from Bancroft Drive to Sycamore Street, Rundell Street from Sheridan Avenue to Jackson Avenue, Lower Muscatine Road from Fair Meadows Boulevard to the fire station, Bloomington Street from Dodge Street to Governor Street, and Meyer Avenue from Rare Road to north of Kessler Road. And then we also chip seal certain streets. Also this year, those roads will be Slothar Road, Taft Speedway, North Dubuque Road, Taft Avenue, a section of Sycamore Street that's east of Gilbert, and then Soccer Park Road. So the estimated construction cost is $1,470,000. And for schedule, we are planning on opening bids April 27, awarding the contract May 3, and then construction would be from this May to this November. So that's kind of a summary of the project, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Any questions? Thank you. All right. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please step to the podium. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Thomas.
Second, Bergus.
Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Bergus.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Motion passed at 7 to 0. Item number 12 is Convey 702 Park Road. This is a resolution authorizing conveyance of Auditors Parcel 2022005 to Charles C. Wonder and Marcia L. Wonder. And I'm going to open up the public hearing. And any staff comments on this?
Not much to add here. Mr. Mayor, this is just an opportunity for, to quiet title on some property that, for which there is a title objection raised. The city doesn't really feel like they're giving up anything, frankly, in providing this, but we want to help out these property owners by quit claiming, as opposed to a warranty deed, quit claiming what deeds we do, or what, any interest we may have in this property, so they can go forth with their property rights.
Thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to approve, please? Moved by Alter, seconded by Weiner. Council discussion.
Does this sort of thing ever come up? I don't remember seeing this sort of thing before. It's like a, do people make objections to?
Yes, oftentimes when there's a property that is to be sold, the property owners get a title opinion from a lawyer, and they call out a number of things, zoning and lean, or I'm sorry, well, liens too, but easements and that kind of thing. And if they find that in their opinion, as a lawyer, there is a cloud on the title or a portion of the lot to be purchased, then they call that out in their written title opinion. And so I haven't seen that title opinion here, but it's my understanding that that's what took place. The attorney who offered that title opinion raised this objection. You know, they, of course, came to the city and said, "Well, hold on. Do you guys think you, you know, own this?" And we said, "No." We don't have, we don't believe you have any interest. We don't certainly need any interest, and so we're just, you know, quit claiming, which again, is not offering a warranty. We're just saying, you know, whatever rights we have in this property, we think it's nothing. It's yours. That cleans up their title. They can purchase it, you know, free and clear.
Thank you.
Sure.
Roll call, please.
Alter.
Yes.
Bergus.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Motion passed at 7 to 0. Item number 13, vending cart appeal. This is a appeal of denial, of application for permit to operate a mobile vending cart. There was correspondence included in 422 as a late handout, which the applicant withdrew this submission, and no further action is needed. Could I get a motion to accept the correspondence?
So moved.
Second, Taylor.
Moved by Weiner, seconded by Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Motion passed at 7 to 0. Item number 14, council appointments. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. 14A is Community Police Review Board. Community Police Review Board has one vacancy for a current or formal peace officer to fill an unexpired term effective upon appointment through June 30, 2025. I think we'll take these all separate today. And so the first one will be... And so the first one will be we'll talk about the former the coroner or former peace officer for the Community Police Review Board, CPRB. Are there any suggestions on who that will be? And there's no gender requirement.
I would move that we appoint David Schwint to that position.
I think based on the ordinance that we just passed, he wouldn't quite be eligible yet for that. Is that correct, Jeff?
That's correct. If you recall, the council had inserted a two-year waiting period for anybody that's separated employment from the city, and he has not quite made that threshold, met that threshold yet.
That's unfortunate.
I have a question actually about another candidate, who I don't know if this qualifies as a peace officer or not. It is Stuart Vandervegget? And he notes that he is he worked as a paralegal in the military, and he worked with military police. How does that fit in the universe of a former peace officer?
My sense is that the council's been very
Broad in its application.
Broad in its interpretation of anyone who has.
Yeah, it's not a hard requirement in the ordinance where you have to have been a law enforcement officer. It's more of a general recognition that somebody that has either been in the profession or had exposure to the profession in some way can bring a valuable perspective to the discussions that they have. So if you felt that somebody, while not a law enforcement, has a glimpse into that profession that may be valuable for the overall discussion, then I think you can include that.
I mean, there's part of me that at the same I recognize, and we've had the discussion before, about the value of having a peace officer, a former peace officer who kind of understands the mechanisms and the structure, who can help kind of guide or at least provide some clarification for other committee, commission members. That there's that correlation. But I feel like if we are thinking about this in sort of the spirit of guidance, this applicant might also suit and provide some valuable insights in his current capacity through working at GuideLink and as a pastor, but then also through this former experience that he has had working in the military. So that's kind of where I was coming from, hoping, and again, you all know my vote previous, that this would be something I would be comfortable with as far as someone who sort of is aware of sort of the structures of law enforcement, but without necessarily being of the police department.
I do think a part of what was asked by the CPRB board when they brought that forth was someone that had knowledge of police operations in a way. Like what are the protocols? The things that are expected of the police officers? And I don't believe that outside of David Schwint, who isn't eligible, meets that requirement. None of the applicants that were submitted. So I guess with that being said, I don't, in this moment in time, feel comfortable appointing, I believe you said Stuart, as the peace officer. But that's just me. It's also a newer position. So, you know, there may need to be more advertisement, potentially.
Mayor, that's actually that code language has been in there for maybe since the inception. I think it's maybe changed a little bit over time, and Eric may be pulling it up now to get the exact language from the code. But we have tried over the years to make sure that somebody that has law enforcement experience or related experience would be on the board. At times, there's been some success in finding those applicants, and in other times, we haven't had that applicant pool, and the council's had to find either somebody in a related field or just we went without that perspective for a while. So I think you do have that flexibility, and it is language that has been in there for quite some time.
Thank you.
I have looked up the language. It says appointments well, I'm sorry, let me skip ahead. "Appointments to the board shall include 'one current or former peace officer,'" in quotes, "as that term is defined by state law, except that a peace officer employed as such by the City of Iowa City, within five years, recently amended to two, of the appointment date shall not be appointed to the board. And the city council reserves the right to waive the residency requirement for good cause shown," and so forth. "The city council also reserves the right for good cause shown to waive the requirement that the board include 'one current or former peace officer.'" So I'm quickly seeing if I can find the state definition of peace officer. I think I'm getting close, but I don't want to delay discussions. Again, consistent with what city manager has told you, you know, you can waive it. And so what's kind of most important is that you're looking for that, you know, experience and expertise from that member. Whether, you know, any one person strictly applies or strictly qualifies as a peace officer under the state code definition or not, you know, isn't maybe the end-all, be-all because of that ability for you folks to waive it. But I'll keep looking for that definition if you folks are interested.
I think while he I'm seeing some heads shake. While our attorney is looking that up, why don't we go on to 14B and have the discussion about the Community Police Review Board. Two vacancies to fill an unexpired term plus a four-year term effective upon appointment through June 30th, 2026. And this one is for one male and one female. And I guess, I don't know if it's fair because we need to determine if Stuart is an option.
Well, for the female, I would put forth Yasmina Sahir. She was a younger community member, and she was very forthcoming in wanting a world in which police did not have to exist, but then explaining how she felt that she could contribute to the board in applying the applicable standards and, you know, setting aside essentially that because we're in a community where most people want police.
I had some reservations about her just because of her history. I mean, as you said, she was straightforward and honest that she's a member of the abolitionist group. But I myself, I think when I have strong opinions of something or even belong to a group, it's hard to separate yourself from that. And I don't know how she would be able to do that. I don't want to speak for her, but how she could separate herself from like an anti-police thing to serve on the CPRB, that's just my opinion.
So I thought it was interesting or perhaps informative that she's also studying criminology in terms of sort of providing background. I just found her I hear what you're saying, Counselor Taylor, completely. And at the same time, I found it very enlightening that she was able to, essentially, I thought, strike a really good balance in her application and has the, I think, some background that could be really useful on the board. We don't have very many young members at all at this point with her experience and her background.
Yeah, I have to agree with Counselor Taylor that I think because of potentially what we've seen as far as like the strong abolitionist thoughts and feelings, that it would be very hard, in my opinion, not knowing this person, of course, if they'll be able to separate, I think it would be very difficult to really look at the situation at hand and make decisions based on that without the abolish the police, you know, at the forefront of their mind. So I think that would be very hard to appoint this individual. I actually had issues with all but really one of the applicant, a female applicant. And then that one that I would have supported is actually in our Civil Commission, Service Commission. And so typically, we don't assign two people to the same commission, or we don't assign people to commissions. And so for the female, I would suggest that we wait for more applicants. Now, for the male, I, again, did not consider Stuart to be our public officer representative. And I don't know if you have a
I do, I mean, I'm not sure I would want to swear to this definition, but based on my quick research, it appears that peace officer includes all the people we would normally think of as, you know, police officers, sheriff's deputies, state troopers, but also game officers, DNR, those kind of things. I could not see anything to indicate that someone who had served in the military, even in the military police capacity, would be considered a peace officer under state code provisions. And so I think that I'm sorry, I've forgotten Stuart's last name. I don't think he would be considered a peace officer for purposes of the CPRB. If I can opine further, Mr. Mayor, given your comments about one of the female applicants who already serves on another board and commission, one possibility the council could consider is to appoint that person contingent upon her resignation from the other board or commission, and then set a date and time certain, for example, the, you know, Wednesday before your next meeting so that if that person declines to resign, then you would be able to move forward with the next meeting and appoint someone else if you so chose. Of course, you don't have to do that, but that's just one possibility for your consideration.
Thank you.
And I think with that individual, we reappointed them not too long ago to the Civil Service Commission?
About a year.
A year ago, okay.
I think at the time, she had also applied for CPRB, but got on the Civil Service.
Okay.
Or it was a reup.
I just know that we've had some trouble sometimes filling those seats on the Civil Service Commission, so I just want to be cognizant of that.
I do, no, I hear what you're saying, and I would agree. I wonder, I guess I would propose that we do the appointment as suggested. Well, with the do the appointment with the option of stating that Melissa would have to resign from the Civil Service Commission, and just giving her that date for resignation if she accepts it or not. But that would be my recommendation there. And then now that Stuart, I don't know what counsel walk away from that was. Now that Stuart is not considered a peace officer, I would also suggest Stuart.
I mean, I think the I like Stuart, I liked his application a lot. I think that, my personal view is, I think we can go ahead and appoint three people if we think there are three people who are well-qualified. And essentially, for now, because there seems to be there has been some regular turnover on there, at least get them sort of fully staffed with the notion that within a year or two that we, there will probably be an opening, and we would be able to, maybe at that point, it'll be two years since David Schwint has stopped working for the city, and he would consider reapplying because I personally think he would be an excellent former law enforcement representative to have on there given his background in the city. But so the the other person that, in addition to Stuart, that I liked was, that I thought would be, could be really helpful on there is Ricky Downing, who served, who worked for several decades as a nurse, and could bring another very interesting perspective to it.
The one positive about his application is that he didn't have a lot of knowledge. And I think about the CPRB, and I think that that's, that can be a positive for fresh eyes coming in with a lot of, you know, history. So I could support Ricky Downing.
I could support Stuart. I think he's an excellent candidate and good background. I liked Gerald Wickham, too. I thought he had some good experience and would be a good fit on
Who, I'm sorry?
Wickham, Gerald Wickham. Although he applied for many things, but he said he was interested in serving in any capacity.
I would be supporter of Stuart. I appreciated his experience as a part-time pastor. I do think these questions of, you know, police review, you know, having that kind of as a baseline seems like it would be, could be valuable on the commission. I'm fine with Melissa. And Ricky Downing as well. He noted that he had had many interactions with law enforcement in his work in healthcare, which I thought also gave him some background in terms of this world that the CPRB is living in.
So I'm hearing majority support for Stuart. I think I met three people for Ricky Downing. Okay, so Ricky Downing. Maybe I support it, yep. And then Melissa Jensen. I know that I've heard at least two, maybe three. What are thoughts? It would be contingent, and it would come back to us.
Under this, as described, I would be all right with Melissa. The only issue is that then we'll have to backfill if she decides to resign. But it sounds like because her application for this is so recent, and she also acknowledges on it that she is a member of another board, she seems to be completely cognizant of that.
Do we have any awareness of which commission is harder to fill, right? I mean, if she were to move over to CPRB, would be would that be hurting the other commission by her absence?
I mean, it's just a three-person commission, right? The Civil Service Commission, right? So they would be down to two people until they could find a third person. And didn't, I think one person on that commission, did their term just lapse? And are we going to have to reappoint someone?
I believe you recently reappointed that person. I think it was Ann Rhodes on the Civil Service Commission.
Thanks, thank you.
You'd have two experienced
So we have two experienced people. I expect we could probably eventually find a third. But maybe David Schwint would want to be on the service commission. He's certainly experienced with civil service.
So it sounds like there's at least three people from Melissa. Are you not quite I think we have a fourth. So it looks like we have majority from Melissa Jensen with the contingency that has been set. Why don't we go ahead to the next one, which would be 4C, Public Art Advisory Committee. And there is one vacancy to fill an unexpired term effective upon appointment through June 30th, 2023. And any nominations there?
The requirement is a female, and we had one male, one female applicant. So the only female was Anita Young. If people feel that she would qualify, I would say we should appoint her.
I would agree with that.
She has a very strong art background.
Yeah.
I liked her application. And I have to confess, I didn't note that it was that a female was needed, and she was my choice anyway. So I think, agreed.
Yeah, she was a good she was, her application was good, so, all right. So I don't have so could I get a motion to approve for Community Police Review Board? Melissa Jensen, Stuart Vandervegget, and Ricky Downing? And for Public Art Advisory Committee? Remind me the name of the female again?
Anita Young.
Anita Young with a J.
Anita Young with a J. Can I get a motion, please?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, again, just if I can add the caveat that Melissa Jensen's application or I should say appointment would be contingent upon application, and, or I should say appointment, would be contingent upon her resignation from the Civil Service Commission, no later than April 13th of this year at 5:00 PM.
Yes.
And, and with Police Community Review Board, or Community Police Review Board, do we need to appoint one of those to designate one of those to, one of those people to fill the partial, the vacant position?
The police officer, the, the peace officer?
Right, just because that's the one that some, that someone just resigned from, so it's not a full term.
Okay, I, I, I think we would have to waive that requirement.
No, I mean waive the requirement, but do we have to decide which, who gets, who gets the four-year term, who gets the remainder of that one term, and who gets the other terms?
Any, any thoughts?
My thoughts would be that Melissa would take the shortened term, since she's coming from one commission already, so she's essentially serving currently, and then it'd just be, she's moving to another one. I don't know if that logic works for anyone, but that's my, that's a suggestion.
I can live with that. I, I did hear a lot of consensus for Stewart, so maybe, you know, Ricky Downing, if someone is, you know, but I can, I can live with Melissa.
Well, I would propose then Stuart Van Der Vaget for the four-year term, that Melissa to fill the unexpired term, and Ricky Downing to fill the, was it the other two? I'm completely confused, I'm sorry.
The other full term.
The other full term.
All right, so are we in agreement with what Councilor Weiner just said? Did you get that?
So that's plugging Melissa into the peace officer.
Correct.
Unexpired term.
Yes.
And she could also reapply if she wanted to.
For a full term, yeah.
All right, so, based on all of the, what's been said, all in favor say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm sorry, do we have?
I don't think we actually had a motion in a second at the end.
Oh, I didn't do a motion.
So you asked for a motion.
Oh, I was doing a motion, and no one, okay.
That's right.
Could I have the motion, please?
So moved, Thomas.
Second, Weiner.
All right, all in favor say aye? Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes, seven to zero. We are on to item number 15, which is announcements of vacancies new. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Airport Commission, two vacancies to fill a four-year term. Historic Preservation Commission at Large, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission Brown Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission Summit Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Housing and Community Development, three vacancies to fill a three-year term. Library Board of Trustees, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through June 30th, 2027. Correspondence included in council packet. Planning and Zoning Commission, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Applicants, applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, May 10th, 2022. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, Argus.
Second, Thomas.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, seven to zero. Announcements of vacancy previous. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Airport Zoning Commission Iowa City Representative, one vacancy to fill a six-year term. Board of Appeals Building Design Professional, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Historic Preservation Commission East College Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Housing and Community Development Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Housing and Community Development Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Public Art Advisory Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Public Art Advisory Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. We're on to item number 17, which is city council information. I do know that we have our Johnson County, oh, we'll talk about that in our work session.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, couple of things, would like to recognize that the University of Iowa student government held a vigil for Ukraine this past weekend at the old Capitol in the rain, and it had about 20 or so different, 20, 25 people, I think, showed up, so a nice little crowd. And also like to point out in the packet today that there are, it's a letter there from me with information about the movie A Decent Home, a documentary about the mobile home crisis, which will be filming at Film Scene on April 28th at 7:00 PM. Tickets are on sale now. This particular film looks at the mobile home crisis through the lens of two communities, one here in North Liberty, Iowa, and one in Aurora, Colorado. You'll see a lot of familiar faces here from Johnson County in part of the film, and it's an important film. It really looks into the, the issue, does some digging into the, through the lens of people's lived experiences, as well as digging into some of the policy issues that are ongoing in our community and in our state and in our country. So I would highly recommend to members of the council, city staff, and any members of the public who can, can make it that evening, it would be worth your time to go and check out this particular film.
Can you repeat that date and time, and please?
Yes, April 28th at 7:00 PM at Film Scene here in Iowa City. And it's in the special events and documentaries film on their webpage. Hopefully I get that correct. Oh, I should probably also notice, also note that the city of Iowa City's Human Rights, Office of Human Rights is also co-sponsoring the screening of this film, so.
I actually have two quick announcements. One that I think is really cool is that Midwest One sponsors an art contest citywide for students, and the, their winners are going to get a reception this Thursday at Midwest One, I think it's just over here on Clinton, for the kids' art exhibit, and so that's going to be exciting. And that's at 5:00, and it's open to the, yes, 5 to 7, open to the public. And then also, here in the room, but then for anyone who's listening, the South District Neighborhood Association has their annual team up to clean up on the Broadway, Sycamore Trails, Weatherby Park, and it is open to help come sort of prep beds, pick up garbage, plant some seeds, and there is a sign-up genius, and you can access it by going to the South District Neighborhood Association's Facebook page. So that's coming up, and it's April 24th, from 9:00 to noon, is a Sunday, but it goes quick, and it's fun. So those are two announcements.
I just wanted to plug a couple climate action things that we have going. On Monday at noon is another in the series of the, it's called like the Speaking of series. Fantastic format with Sarah Gardner and Jane Welch just talking to each other in a Zoom meeting, very engaging, and this topic on Monday is reasons for hope relating to climate action, so I'm very excited to check that out. And then we have the Lucas Farms Energy Blitz, which I was trying to look up the date and time and hoping city staff might have that handy, because it's coming up here. But there's volunteer opportunities for that as well. I'm sure it's on icgov.org, if you look for the Energy Blitz, Blitz. I know they're seeking volunteers. That occurred in the South District last year, really cool program where they have a whole bunch of volunteers come into the neighborhood and distribute boxes with a whole, a lot of energy efficiency information, LED light bulbs, whistle for your furnace, so when the filter gets clogged, it starts, you know, whistling at you and tells you to change it. And then also, later in the afternoon, they come back and pick up boxes into which you can put batteries for recycling, and I think a couple other items as well, but all that information is included, and very cool program.
Looks like April 23rd.
Oh, thank you. I knew if I talked about it long enough, you'd have me. April 23rd, thanks.
I just want to wish everyone who celebrates Ramadan, Mubarak, for the month of Ramadan, holy month of Ramadan.
All right, item 18 is a report from city staff. City manager?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Deputy city manager?
Nothing for me.
Our city attorney?
Just want to offer thanks to the senior center for hosting us for so long, and a reminder to everyone in the public that we will be back at Harvet Hall at our next meeting on the 19th.
For the first time since the end of March 2020.
Yes. Our city clerk?
Yeah, I'll just do a plug for the Community Police Review Board Community Forum that's coming up April 20th at 6:00 PM, and it's via Zoom.
Great, thank you. Can I get a motion, we're at item number 19, can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved, Thomas.
Second, Walter.
Moved by Thomas, seconded by Taylor. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.